Call to Order Chisholm, uh, City Council Meeting, November twenty-six, twenty twenty-five. Susan, would you please take roll call?
Councilor Halliba?
President.
Councilor Clacken?
Here.
Councilor Baki?
Here.
Councilor Varda?
President.
Councilor Halverson?
President.
Mayor Ray?
Here. Council, I'd look for a motion to adopt the agenda.
Motion.
Thank you, Jim.
Second.
Thank you, Jed. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Put your allegiance if you would.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jed, any public participation over there?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Start with, uh, council reports. Councilor Halverson, good evening.
Good evening. I attended, uh, our working session, uh, Redhead Planning Committee meeting and the Minnesota Discovery Center planning meeting as well.
Counselor, Counselor Varda, good evening.
Good evening. I just attended the Minnesota Discovery Center meeting along with Councilor Halverson.
Counselor Baki, good evening.
Good evening. Um, just happy Thanksgiving and a shout out to the public work crew for making our streets drivable today for us after winter finally showed its face. Um, other than that, that's all I got.
Counselor Foulton, good evening.
Good evening. Um, I attended the working session meeting on the day, November seventeenth, and I also attended the library board meeting on the eighteenth. And also have happy Thanksgiving, everybody. And, um, bringing lights to Chisholm will be on Thursday, December eleventh. We, uh, got that approved last meeting, so.
Excellent. Counselor Halliba, good evening.
Evening. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Uh, attended the work, council working session, our monthly RAMS meeting and our Public Utilities Commission meeting today.
Evening. Only report I have is I know everyone's getting their, uh, tax statements out, so, um, at our next council meeting, we will be, um, setting our final levy. What you got in the mail was preliminary, um, so we have been working, our staff's been working diligently to decrease that, and I foresee that, uh, cutting in half at least by fifty percent. So depending on conversation that we had in our working session, uh, I'm very confident in that, so. Thank you very much. Fire Chief? Good evening.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Just to give you a quick update on us, we've been busy as usual. Um, we actually hosted a regional training for the fire department, State Fire Marshal's Office on the new reporting system that's coming out for the fire recordings nationwide. Um, that went well, well attended, and, um, we actually filled the classes and the waiting list, so that was great. And then the other thing, I had a meeting with the design team for the new Balkan, um, the new county garage out in Balkan. They were talking about fire suppression and everything else, so I attended that meeting with them to give them some guidance on how we'd respond. You have any other questions for us?
Thank you.
Good official, Manny. Good evening.
Good evening and happy Thanksgiving, Mayor and Council members. Um, I just wanted to give a short report and let you know that we issued the certificate of occupancy for the arena and the curling club project. It's complete and it's open and it looks really nice, so if you have a chance, stop down and take a look. Um, a lot of, a lot of the money we spent is in the ice plant itself, so you're not gonna see, you know, a lot when you walk in. It's all in that plant, so it looks very nice. Um, it was a great project, so. Um, to date, we have two hundred and fifty-three building permits with a value of ten million five hundred thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars, so construction season is about, about done for the year, as you can see outside, so we closed really good, really nice. We had a nice year this year, so.
Excellent. Thank you, Manny.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Gorks, Larry. Good evening.
Evening, Mayor. Council, thank you. I'd be remiss if I didn't, uh, mention the snow today, so, and we appreciate you staying with us, although we've been waiting and waiting and waiting. And, um, we have two new drivers. We're just a, we're two people short right now. We have a few things going on, but we're gonna get there real quick. It's gonna be a nice, smooth winter, and, um, we're figuring it out with the new guys and the old guys and the equipment, and we already broke a grader today, but we'll get that back up real soon, so we'll get there. And, uh, it is a holiday tomorrow, but we do have a small cleanup crew. Um, it's a little messy out there with the parked cars, you know, it's a two-day plow in Chisholm with the calendar parking and stuff, so we'll get out there. And I hope you enjoy the holiday Christmas lights on Lake Street. It, it's all lit up, hundred percent. I checked it on my way in today, so we had a little extra time and it was forty-seven degrees putting up that stuff. That never, that never happens, so. Yeah, with that, it's really nothing on the agenda here, so.
I just echo, uh, Counselor, uh, Baki's statement, you know, first time out and very good.
Thank you. Yeah, and it was a messy one, you know, that, that wet, I mean, it was forty-seven degrees and rained for eight hours, the slushy mess and packed it down and, yeah, so it was a mess, but we got it.
I appreciate the plow guy that came by after I, yeah, my work truck started and moved it, came back.
Yeah, we, we're trying, we tried to do a two-day plow in one day, I mean, we were there till the end of it today, so. And we'll have a little crew tomorrow, so if there's any, people can still call tonight, leave me a message, and we'll get it tomorrow, so, for sure. And it was a full garbage day route, so we didn't have those two garbage trucks to kinda help out in parking lots and stuff too, but we made it work, so.
Good job.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Parks Trails, right? City Attorney, Brian, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. No formal report, but I am happy to field questions if they're all right.
City Clerk Treasurer, Devin. City Administrator Stephanie, good evening.
Good evening. Um, just wanna wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and, um, just be safe, and, yeah, that's all I have to say.
Right, Council, moving on, I would look for a motion support to approve the consent agenda, which consists of the list of bills, communications, minutes of previous city council meeting minutes, and, uh, payroll and overtime.
Motion.
Thank you, Jim.
Good work.
Thank you, Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. No unfinished business, moving into new business. Fire Chief Willie, first up.
Good afternoon again, Mayor and Council. So this afternoon, all we have in front of you is, uh, we've been doing our annual, we've been getting in the habit of doing all of our annuals, going over our SOGs, our bylaws and everything else. So, um, look, the recommendation, the only changes to the Relief Association bylaws will be to benefit a month, thirty-five-hundred to fifty-five-hundred. That number came after our audits, our annual audit of our SC fund back in June. Um, and I have Dan who sent it with me tonight, he's the vice president of Relief Association, so it'll be a quick rundown on the numbers.
Perfect. Counselors, Mayor? Evening, Devin.
Thank you. Yeah, as, uh, as Jason said, we do our annual audit on our Relief Association, it's done by a third-party accountant, uh, Berlin Associates over in, over Hibbing. And each year, when she does that audit for us, we, we play with the numbers. Uh, we got liabilities and we got, uh, you know, uh, assets. And she plays with the numbers to see how much we could potentially pay out per firefighter per year. And the, the state has a form, an SC form, that, that shows the liabilities and then how much we're overfunded, so she'll play those numbers to show us where, where the, uh, the line is, where we'd no longer be overfunded. In this last year, so twenty twenty-four, uh, monies, we came to just under sixty-five-hundred dollars a year per firefighter with our current liabilities, um, with that number. So we are currently at thirty-five-hundred dollars a year, so we're drastically overfunded. The overfund amount, and again, this is all twenty twenty-four monies, uh, the overfunded amount at that time was four hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars and change. Uh, along with that, we also have had some liabilities change on our end this year. Uh, we had a long, uh, uh, very senior firefighter retire, uh, along with, uh, about forty-five-thousand dollars over projected, uh, returns on our investments. So the, removing the liability of that firefighter, uh, saves us about sixty-eight-hundred dollars compared to what it would be if, if he was on the liability of what we're asking for. So that, that puts our total projected overage, um, well over half a million dollars. So, yeah, we're requesting, uh, approval to amendment to our bylaws to bring our annual, uh, service pension amount to fifty-five-hundred dollars.
Any questions for Dan or Jason?
I do. You know how I am. I gotta, I gotta ask questions so I can understand, you know?
April, can you pull your mic to the floor?
Oh, yes. Absolutely. Perfect. All right. Um, was this the only revision made to the, uh, bylaws?
That was the only revision, correct. The highway.
Um, when was the last time that, uh, the bylaws were looked at?
Last year?
Yeah, they, they were updated from January first of twenty twenty-five, which brought us to thirty-five-hundred. As far as full bylaws review, that I don't, I don't really answer.
So is this the first time it's been to the council? To be passed?
It gets approved by the council every time it changes.
If you look on page twenty-four, every time that it.
I just need some clarification.
Yep.
On me, oh.
So on twenty-four, each one of those times it changed, it has to go to the council for approval.
Okay, but nothing else has changed except for that?
Nothing in the bylaws, except that article right there will change. I don't know it off the top of my head, but.
Okay, and then I have another question. Who's on the Board of Trustees?
Uh, so, uh, Mayor, the Administrator in Chief are in, uh, unofficial, is that the term? Uh, members, and then as far as the trustees is Billy Temple, myself, Jeremy Arger. Dylan Anderson. Who?
James.
James North.
And Lloyd.
And Lloyd Scholl.
So it's made up of, uh, membership that is voted upon, so anyone that wants to be on the board puts out, has to submit their name for approval, and then it, uh, goes up for voting. Someone has to be nominated, and then they have to obviously accept, but they put their name in, so they're there, and then it's voted on to who goes onto that board.
And then all members of the department, uh, are members of the Relief Association by, by placement.
That was my next question.
And the, uh, the amendment change was approved by full membership at, at our last meeting, not just the Board of Trustees.
Okay, okay. Um, with making those financial decisions like that, isn't that a conflict of interest?
Between?
If you are, if it's a board of, if it's a board of firefighters and their pay, they're talking about their pay or their pension, um, isn't that like a, and they're, they're, but they wanna set it, isn't that a conflict of interest?
That would probably be a question for Terry Lindzen.
Clear, fine, hey? The, uh, Council, the way that I understand, uh, the system is you have a, a Board of Trustees that oversees the, uh, the management of the pension fund. Those trustees, by their designation as trustees, would have fiduciary duties to not just the active members, but to, uh, the fund itself. Uh, they would set a number, that's then taken to the, the, the entire department or all active members where there's a vote of the members, and then the council here acts as the final check and balance. So while it may seem a direct conflict, they, there's, um, levels of oversight built in to make sure that it doesn't get out of hand.
That's where, uh, that SC form comes in, 'cause that, that's, it doesn't, annual audit done by the independent.
See, I need to know this.
And then it gets, it actually gets certified.
And it lets the people know, too.
Yep, and then it actually gets certified with the state office, too.
By the state, the Office of State Auditor reviews our monies, and we can't ask for more than what we're funded for, and we're actually leaving a quite large buffer in, in there in order to, um, safeguard us against, you know, market swings.
It refers to also an article number fourteen in several of the, these, uh, instances. There is no article fourteen.
We pointed out to me, we had a formatting issue with one of them, I think at the last time too, and I thought that got fixed. Marty actually thought that last time, and I thought that was fixed.
I don't know, I'm gonna be honest with you, this is the first time I've ever seen bylaws.
It, it would've been in the council paper for January last year, or December, December.
You deserve to have to do that.
I will look through that back. Through December?
Yeah. And it's something we're trying to get better at, um, getting, like I said, going over our SOGs, our bylaws and everything else every year, so that everybody keeps up to date, and keep you guys informed of what's going on, too.
Independent on our fund, we may not propose amendments every year, so the bylaws wouldn't need to change then.
Well, I just, I, I, I don't think, I think you guys deserve more than that, that's, you know what I'm saying? You guys do a lot for our community, you know, um, and you're doing it basically voluntarily, and you're not making any money, you're doing it because you love people and you wanna help people. Um, and I understand that, but I need to under, I also need to understand how things work.
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
And if I'm questioning how things work, I'm sure there's public also. Um, is it gonna be also a financial burden to do when somebody retires? And if they're at that full term of twenty years of like a hundred and ten thousand dollar lump sum, is that gonna be?
It's fully funded.
Yeah, it, it, it's, it's over fully funded.
Yeah.
So currently, well, at the end of twenty twenty-four, our entire liability that we owed with all of our people, deferred people, active people, um, the full liability was, uh, seven hundred and fifteen thousand and some change. Uh, our count as, as of ten twenty-nine twenty-five was at one point one eight eight million, and again, some change.
So essentially, if everybody pulled out tomorrow?
You'd have enough for these people to be covered?
Yeah, so we have it fully funded.
Okay.
Yep.
And then as, as time goes on, and people get more years in and their liability increases, that's why it gets honored every year, so we can make adjustments as needed.
I, I really appreciate you helping me understand.
Anything else? Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I think I'd recommend a roll call vote, 'cause I abstain myself of the conclusion.
And then will we fix article fourteen? Would that be something you guys will look at?
I'll get with you after that, it's probably a different article, 'cause I, I do remember the recommendation on that change, and I don't think it, it must have slipped through the cracks, it will be honest with you.
No, we'll get it fixed. Hey, Susan, would you please take a roll call vote? Oh, no, excuse me. I would look for a motion and support.
Motion.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second.
Thank you, Marty. Susan, would you please take a roll call?
Councilor Halliba?
Abstain.
Councilor Clacken?
Aye.
Councilor Baki?
Yes.
Councilor Varda?
Aye.
Councilor Halverson?
Aye.
Mayor Ray?
Abstain. Motion carries. Thank you, John.
And from the Department, we'd like to thank you guys for your support, too. You guys do take care of us very well. Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on, Parks Trails Right Director, Colin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I ask that you please see the attached resolution number one-one-two-five-dash-nine-five, accepting grant funds from Ascenda Health in the amount of six thousand dollars for long-year lake park project.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Council, I'd look for a motion and support.
Big motion.
Thank you, Jed.
Good.
Thank you, Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks, happy Thanksgiving, all.
Thank you. City Clerk Treasurer, Devin.
Hello?
Hello?
Page twenty-nine, uh, resolution number one-one-two-five-dash-nine-six is to formally certify the assessments and liens over the county, which is done every year for our special assessments and any, uh, preferred accounts that we might have with utilities. Um, so we're just looking for approval to adopt that resolution.
Council, I'd look for a motion and support for resolution one-one-two-five-dash-nine-six.
Motion.
Thank you, Jim.
Second.
Thank you, Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is resolution number one-one-two-five-dash-nine-seven on page thirty-two. Uh, if you haven't read it through my memo, it, basically, the minimum residential rate is, um, is recommended to go up, uh, four dollars ninety-eight cents for water, sewer and garbage. We ran this by the Public Utility Commission, and this is a recommendation. The, the rates are relatively consistent with the Baker Tilly, Baker Tilly study that was done for, um, the years twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-six, and we plan on, uh, I believe the Utility Commission wants to, um, redo that, that study for another five years since it's ran its term. So in my memo, uh, you can see the proposed increase for the residential rate. Then on page thirty-three is the resolution, which is formal language, and thirty-four through thirty-six is, look, may look a little bit different than last year, but this is basically a printout from our utility software that presents all the residential rates, the commercial rates for different size lines, et cetera, and highlighted, and green are the changes from twenty twenty-five. This is what I'm gonna use with Denise to, to make sure that her utility software is in line with what's approved.
Right, Council, unless there's any questions, I'd look for a motion and support for resolution one-one-two-five-dash-nine-seven.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Jed.
Support.
Thank you, Jim. Any further discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you for the detail.
Thanks, John. Okay, City Administrator Stephanie.
Good evening. Good evening. Um, the item I have on the agenda today is the City of Chisholm Paid Family Leave Act policy. As many of you are aware, the state law is changing, and we will be now offering paid family leave. We have worked with, um, excuse me, that will be starting January first. We've worked with Ravina, our HR consultant, to come up with our policy for the paid family leave. It has been brought to, um, our supervisors, have reviewed it, and, um, we're looking for the final approval for this policy.
Right, Council, not much of a choice here, so I'd look for a motion and support to approve the, uh, Paid Family Leave Act policy.
Motion.
Thank you, April. Thank you, Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right, first thing under myself, cigarette license applications. Council, I'd look for a motion and support to approve the twenty twenty-six cigarette, tobacco, product license applications.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Marty.
Support.
Thank you, Jim. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so we got some, uh, donation requests coming up here. So first one here, we have youth and action request for donation. City Council approved a five-hundred donation to earmark for Chisholm students last year. Depending on your opinion, I think that'd be, uh, adequate for doing the year. Do you feel?
Talk now or after we make a motion?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Um, so if I remember correctly, last year, we, we made sure that this money was earmarked with, to Chisholm students, assuming that they go to this. I, there is a YIA club in the high school, I do not know how many members, um, there are in that group, and I don't know if this is a per-student fee or if this is just a, I mean, I know it's a sponsorship fee, but I don't know if, like, a school gets charged to bring kids, I, I don't, I don't know that answer, but, I mean, I, I didn't hear any complaints last year, and so, I don't see why we wouldn't help, as long as, as long as our gambling fund isn't too low, Devin.
If our gambling fund is healthy, healthily adequate.
Perfect.
Yeah?
Yeah, I have no issue with it.
Do you think that's, uh, good a motion?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, Council, unless anyone has, uh, any other thoughts, I'd look for a motion support for, uh, five hundred dollars to be earmarked for, um, to be used for Chisholm students.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Travis.
Support.
Thank you, Jim. So what's the motion entail again? Does Chisholm students?
Listen, we, so the idea is to make sure that this money is used if there is any fees associated to Chisholm students.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I'll call, just call.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next up, we have, um, Hope Remembrance Park, we'd ask for donation. You can see in your packet here, um, this is gonna be used for, uh, a Serene Oil Park located in Hibbing, um, at nineteenth street between tenth and eleventh avenues. Uh, park will feature, uh, the Angel of Hope statue. It will be, uh, kind of an establishment for light after loss and, uh, the bereaved mothers group. The candles and comfort care packages for clinics and hospitals in Hibbing, Virginia, Grand Rapids and surrounding areas, so I know although this is in Hibbing, this does, uh, support families from all around our areas. So I, I would hope that this would be something that we would be able to give into. Are they looking for a certain amount, or? I didn't see anything.
On the third page, they're your options.
So there's our options on the third page, um, for sponsorship and oil.
Could probably give whatever, too.
No?
Is that a recommendation? So we could probably give whatever, so.
So if we were to do, I don't know, I guess I didn't read this super close, but, like, if we were to do a tree, like, what is that? They just put our name on a tree, or what? I don't, I don't know that answer.
Probably just plant a tree for the lost mothers that are grieving. So you'll have your, uh, recognition on a small plaque near or on that, I know, as well, so, yeah, I believe you're correct. Tree would be nice. They last a long time.
I'll make a motion that we sponsor this program with a tree for a thousand dollars.
Okay. Um, for the sponsorship, do we want to use the City of Chisholm, or do we want to use, I don't know, some of the other ones we use, like the Redhead or, you know, those for, using, uh, the Camp Brown or something, or, just do we wanna?
City of Chisholm.
City of Chisholm?
That's my preference. You guys choose.
I would go with your preference. Uh, that's your motion, motion, Travis?
No, I'm fine.
Okay, with a disclaimer, not a fine.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jed. Any further discussion?
I, I don't think, Mr. Mayor, I know one of the ladies that works behind the scenes in this, she's very dedicated and does a lot of work and, and there's a lot of, uh, good things for a lot of families around here, so.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next up, we have a request for donation to the Chisholm food shelf. See on the attached flyer, city donated $1,000 last year. I know that our, our fund is definitely adequate, and I think this year might be a little more hard on certain families than in years past, so maybe my recommendation that we look at, you know, something more than $1,000.
I would, I would recommend $2,500, because of the situation.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Thank you, Jim. Motion for $2,500, second by April. Thank you. Any further discussion?
This is coming out of our gambling funds for this, too? Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a letter of recommendation for Commissioner Jugovich to the LCCMR Board, pretty much kind of in line with what we did last year. We're just renewing it so we can send it on and hopefully get some representation from the Northland here. So I would look for a motion, or a motion and support to approve the letter of recommendation.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, April.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Jim. Motion made by April, second by Jim. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I have one thing, too. The Rams did put out a letter for support as well, overwhelming support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next up, we'd like to schedule a special meeting for December 3rd, 2025, for the M.DOT, M.N.D.O.T., Public Informational Meeting, to be held at the Senior Center, December 3rd at 5:30 PM, Takavaut Highway 73. So this is just in case we have a forum show up. Uh, if we don't, we don't have to worry about it, but in case we do. I would look for a motion and support to, I'd look for a motion to set a special meeting for December 3rd, 2025, 5:30 PM. Thank you, Travis, support. Thank you, Jed. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, last thing on the agenda tonight is to reschedule the December 24th working council meeting, because it's on Christmas Eve. Looking at schedules, would we be able to do the 23rd of that week, Tuesday?
Works for me.
I don't think that will work in my world, but.
You can schedule it, and if they don't need it, we can cancel it, too.
So that's a good point. If we don't need it, we can always cancel it after, reschedule it also. You know, being at the end of the year there, I think we're going to be taking care of a lot of our business on the December 10th meeting. I know the 17th, the week before, does not work for me. Does a Tuesday work for anybody?
The 23rd?
23rd.
I'm okay with that.
I'm good.
I'd look for a motion and support to reschedule a December 24th meeting to December 23rd.
Motion.
Thank you, Jim.
Second.
Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.